Well, we've obviously deeply moved people with this agenda item, haven't we? All right. This is the North Miami Planning Commission, Tuesday, July 1st, 2014, at 7:00 PM, meeting in council chambers. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Trust the flag is there? Yes, it is. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Please be seated. Roll call of board members, please. Excused.
Kenny Each.
Present.
Charles Ernst.
Present.
Kevin Seifert.
Present.
Jason James.
Um, he's running late, we expected, though.
Bill Prevattell.
Present.
All right. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
You have a quorum.
Yes, I know we have a quorum. Do we have any amendments?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair. We don't.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Then the Chair will call for approval of the minutes of the June 3rd, 2014, meeting.
For approval?
Second.
All right. Moved by Mr. Ernst, seconded by Mr. Prevattell. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let me find the sign page here and get my name on this and then pass this down to Kent and we'll get on with the next item. All right, Kent, the minutes are duly signed, sir. Thank you. All right. Do we have any communications? None? Continued public hearings? None. Let's go to item five. Public hearings, PCO 8-14. An ordinance of the Vice Mayor, acting as Mayor and City Council of the City of North Miami, Florida, amending Chapter 29 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances entitled Land Development Regulations by amending Article 5, Division 8, entitled Design, specifically at Sections 5-802, 5-803, and 5-804, to amend the current transit-oriented development design standards throughout the city and further amending Division 14 entitled Parking and Loading, specifically at Sections 5-1401 and 5-1409, to revise the current parking garage design criteria to encourage greater architectural appeal, improve visual interest, and promote economic growth, consistent with the intent of the City of North Miami Comprehensive Plan and the Downtown Development and Major Corridor Master Plan, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification, and for an effective date. Staff report, please.
The staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the proposed ordinance to amend Article 5 of the city's Land Development Regulations, LDRs, of Sections 5-802, 5-803, and 5-804, to update the current transit-oriented development design standards throughout the city, also amending Sections 5-1401 and 5-1409, Parking and Loading, consistent with the recommendation of the city's adopted Downtown Development and Major Corridor Master Plan.
All right. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item is welcome to step forward. Finding that there is virtually no one in the audience, we shall close the public hearing and open this up for Commission discussion. I will move to my left to Mr. Prevattell, who has long called for these design initiatives to be undertaken first. Mr. Prevattell?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a brief question. Could you articulate a little bit for us what the actual changes are for getting larger or smaller for us as well as the public if they should be watching?
Of course. The changes are generally related to the design standards under Division 8, titled Design. And what we did was we identified, or rather tied up, the design standards with the downtown, let me see if I could use, the Downtown Development and Major Corridor Master Plan recommendations. The city went through that process and through that process, in the book, there were several recommendations that were, you know, placed. And we realized that it was for advantage to us to tie up those recommendations and insert them in the, or rather, update them in the Land Development Regulations because some of the things didn't match exactly. The intent was there, but some of the things didn't tie up exactly with the master plan. So that's what we did. So you may see that, of course, if there is no change to the text, it's original text, underlined is new text, and strike through is something that has been taken out or shall be taken out. So, for example, let me give you an example. Sidewalks. We made the sidewalk criteria consistent with the master plan. So you will see that in Section 803, which talks about transit-oriented and mixed-use standards citywide, the sidewalk requirement is five feet. So is the same thing is for the transit-oriented development and major corridor areas. Initially, we had certain mismatches. We just mashed up certain things so they would be consistent wherever those standards are applied.
Was there--
And if you look at the staff report, there is a diagram--
Reference page numbers for--
The staff report, page two? There is a reference diagram on the bottom of the page, and it shows how the build-to-line would be applied. So from the end of the curb or property line, when you go back--
Three of six, I'm sorry.
Sorry?
Two of six.
Two of six. Two of six.
Okay.
And you would see how it all fits together so that when a developer comes in, they would understand where the building facade begins and where it ends. If you go to the next page, page three, the same diagram is shown in a section view, so it is easy to understand in light of the building facade, the height, and all the amenities such as cafe seating, which is the desire of the city, to have something like that, and it's a separate five-foot-wide area for walking, for pedestrian activities. The standards that are outlined here in the staff report basically talk about things that I just explained through these diagrams that the developers required, that there should be a minimum five-feet-wide sidewalk. If the developer is not proposing any improvements, there still needs to be a five-foot-wide sidewalk. If they are proposing improvements in other areas of the city, it would be five plus five, meaning 10. If it is within the major downtown area and major corridor area, it would be 10 plus five, 15, right? So that's that, basically.
So in effect, Mr. Chairman--
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Ernst.
How does that affect setback standards? In other words, he's given that 15 feet, so in effect, if he says, "Well, I want to make sure that the ordinance also specifies a setback will therefore be 15 feet from the point of the street or the curb,"
Yeah, 15 feet from the curb.
15 from the curb, correct? So there is language written in to that so that--
Yes.
It's understood that he would have to have a 15-foot setback period and a discussion.
That is correct. The ordinance, that is, this document has the text amendment as part of the ordinance. So it spells out all these sections individually with all these line items, and it is spelled out in the same way. The staff report is more or less a summary of the text amendment, and it is, if you went to the ordinance itself, and if you go to page number three of 22, as an example--
Can I, Mr. Chairman, on page three, you're going to three of 23?
Yes.
Three of 22.
Three of 22 in the ordinance itself.
Go down to Section 5-802, Subparagraph B, and I think you might have a typo there. I was reading this and I'm trying to, you have Downtown Master Development and Major Corridor Plan is downtown area along Northwest 125th Street. Should that be Northeast 125th Street? That would be your one, two, three, your fourth line down.
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Yeah. I just want to impress you with my vast knowledge because I did go through this today. We're flying too close.
So for the record, then, we will amend Northwest 125th Street to Reed Northeast.
Good chat.
Thank you for bringing that out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Your expertise.
I read this a couple of times. You did a very good job on it, by the way.
Going back to the, sort of, my original question was, even though I can spot a few places where it's six feet and now it's five feet, can you give us a little bit of a general overview, especially if someone does not have the documentation that we have, in terms of how this is being proposed? What previously did we have or could we expect and what do we expect now in terms of numbers and distances?
Right. So previously, what we had was a general statement where sidewalks should be provided or, you know, certain areas would, certain amenities would be provided for businesses along, you know, within certain areas. What we did was we defined that it would be transit-oriented development slash mixed use. That was the first thing we defined. And we also defined that as citywide and the same as within the downtown and major corridors. So those are the, those two main sections. In those sections, as we just discussed, we defined the sidewalks and the amenities and the build-to-line as it applies. We also added new language that would address architectural appeal, that would address streetscape standards, that would address parking standards, meaning in these areas, parking must be on the sides or behind, not in front, because we have a built environment. Everything is built all the way up to the street and we have to work with what we have. So we are trying to, we added that, updated that information. We also talk about the parking garage and parking structure standards for downtown and major corridors, as well as the other areas of the city, requiring them to have buffer and aesthetic appeal, architectural landscape treatments, lighting requirements so that they do not, shall we say, spill on residential areas adjacent to them. So all those languages have been added, in a nutshell. That's what I would say.
I was trying to find the portion of that with regards to the actual height of a parking structure, recognizing the fact that you could have a three-level parking garage that could be 30 feet or it could also be 50 feet, depending on the design of the parking garage. I can think of one instance in the city that caused a lot of consternation because of the fact that the building, although it stated it had four levels of parking, it became almost a 60-foot-high structure. So where do I see language in here that addresses actual height and bulk of a parking garage and is the city looking to address these concerns in any way? I'm not just talking about spaces and floors, but actual height of the structure itself and the bulk of it. Can I bring up something with regard to that? We're going to do the review, the height and the density, and I think next month, I believe, we're going to start reviewing land use. And right now, I think we can go 10 stories. I thought we were reviewing our land use and height and density next month.
I'm sorry. No, I don't understand your question.
Well, my question, my statement is this. I like to see, and I brought this up at the last meeting that I was here, is that I like to see the height increase dramatically. I look at other cities around us--
Yeah.
And I see City of Miami, beautiful project today in the Miami Herald, 50, 60 stories, one building. And if we're going to have that kind of density, then our parking garages, obviously, would go maybe four or five stories high. You look at some of our beautiful condos in the area, some of those condos, their parking garages are underneath the building, they're landscaped appropriately, they're beautiful, and four, five stories, some of them. And I think if we're going to make a major impact on this city and change the way we're going, we have to get out of this 10-story height thing that we have here on 125th Street and maybe look at Northwest 7th Avenue and go, "Sky's the limit" there, and change in the density and the height on Biscayne Boulevard and other places, West Dixie Highway and so forth. Otherwise, we're just spinning our wheels.
Just to add a thought, this is not to recommend it, but downtown Miami, there are some cases where there are 12 stories of parking--
12 stories, sure. Coral Gables.
And it is higher than some of the buildings, some of the maximum building heights, total building heights, in the City of North Miami for many, many of our districts.
I go down Coral Gables and I see beautiful parking garages down there and then the towers on top of that. So I think we want to kind of look at that.
And it's not to recommend it, nor do I think we want just a city full of giant parking garages everywhere. And to that effect, though, it is nice that we're paying attention and we're trying to, if we have the possibility of future parking garages, that they're dealt with a little bit more pleasingly for the community. And to that extent, further, and we're talking about growth, I just wonder if these setback distances, basically being 15 feet from the curb, have been considered in terms of our future growth? 15 feet from the curb does not allow really anything for a new lane to be put in if a road needs to be widened. You know, it's sort of, you don't have a lot of leeway there. Are there some cases where we may need to, and this downtown committee was, we had, many of us had hoped that they would have been uncovering some of this, saying you could look for this to be widened, or this to be narrowed, or this to be closed, or this to be opened, in terms of roadways. None of that seems to have been presented. So here's--
I'm sorry.
So here's sort of a blank treatment.
But they're city streets, and I think the idea of taking a city street and trying to widen it, and you can't, any big city's going to have that problem just because there's already existing buildings along that street, and to think that you could just go along and try to widen, you know, I'm not sure that that would be--
Well, my point is that it may be better now than once a 50-story tower gets put up and you can't really move it at all. We don't really have a great deal of investment in our particular downtown area, and if we requested or called for a little bit further of a setback, then what would the people be sacrificing? Maybe a one-story sort of taxpayer-type building if we feel that there's a need for it being a little bit more open? Our streets are kind of tight as it is, they're kind of crowded as it is. What happens when it builds out further? And there definitely will be more traffic. You know, it's a concern, and if we don't plan for sort of arterials changing the course of the traffic or some means of doing it, we're just going to be asking for a very congested situation that some of our surrounding communities have, where it takes a half-hour to get a few blocks out of your community.
May I, Bill, with, I look at Sunny Isles. I look at Aventura. They have congestion and they have a good tax base and they have a good quality of life. And for 40-odd years, I've been in this city here--
A big setback, though.
All I hear is, "Well, we don't want the traffic, but we have the traffic. The traffic is here now, and setback's important." And, you know, 15 feet, I go down to Gables and they're, heck, I go down to see my broker down there and I see these beautiful towers and maybe they're 15-foot back from the curb line. I go down, well, downtown by the courthouse, maybe 15, 20 feet back from the curb line. But they're destination points. And unfortunately, our city has become, because of this, we don't want to build the four stories and we don't want the traffic, but we have the traffic. We've kept ourselves small and we shot ourselves in the foot and I think, "Well, you know what? There's a trade-off. Give me the traffic, but give me the tax base and give me the beautiful buildings. And if you're only going to give me 15 feet out there on the sidewalk and the curb, let me have it." You know, what's the difference if I got 15 or 25? I mean--
Well, if I may, you kind of addressed a couple, you gave a couple very good examples. Both Coral Gables, which was a planned community going back to the 1920s, still has, had the foresight to be able to still grow into that plan. And a lot of the streets do have angular parking and large medians, and it's still rather accommodating. And they are able to put in their taller buildings because they had the wider roadways going both east-west and north-south, and some of them diagonal. It really is fairly substantial. Case of Aventura, that's very much setback. There's almost, there's very little that I can recall that's right on the street. A lot of the towers are setback a great deal, and it has that breathing room, it has that park space, it has that vision to grow into. My point is not to compromise on future development. My point is just to not create choke points that will then impede, you know, the next wave of people reviewing these things to say, "Wow, because we didn't make the street water or make these other provisions, we really can't do that second, third, or 10th or 100th tower along the way. We really need to stop it and what might have been a grander plan becomes compromised. Do we have something else? Are we convinced?" Let me put it this way. Are we convinced that we can do this and basically our streets and the width of our streets and the flow, the direction, everything about our streets is fine now and will be 20, 40, 50, 100 years from now? Because it gets very difficult the further you get down to make any adjustments to that.
Well, 40 years from now, I predict that we're going to have flying cars like that in the future.
Maybe, maybe.
Well, I think what we have to, to me, what we have to understand is, this was, 125th Street is kind of an example of the 1950s downtown, small-town luck. So the streets weren't big and wide. So you have a situation where now you have all these existing buildings that are built along that line. I don't know how you can approach saying that we would have to look at widening 125th Street all at one time or envision that. I think we have to, we may have to look at it with having to work around that narrow street, similar to streets that you find in New York that are--
Sure, exactly.
--that were narrow. And then they had to put big buildings on those. So it's not suggesting that we take 125th Street and widen it, but try to adapt to it and get out of the mentality that we're looking at it as a Main Street, small-town America, and try to adjust to, okay, how do we work with that area that we have in there and get away from, you know, your Main Street, USA? Because you can't, because it's a thoroughfare that the state runs and it's a thoroughfare that runs between Miami Beach to I-95. So that's one of the detriments that we have to work with also. We have traffic that we have no control over because of the fact that it's a state thoroughfare connecting, you know, Sunny, connecting the beach with I-95. So therefore, we can't say, "Okay, let's take it, shut it all down and make a big, beautiful, wide, you know, Lincoln Road-type of thoroughfare." We don't have the surrounding areas that we could work with to do that and the cost that would be involved in the timeframe. I would think that we would be long gone by the time, something like that--
Leaving another generation the problem.
Right.
But, you know, this isn't so bad, I mean, it's not so bad, you know, if it's, we're still our one-story, two-story, three or four, maybe, you know, a little bit more. When it starts to become a tower, it starts to loom in on the city. I mean, that's why in New York, I believe it was the Equitable Building about 100 years ago, because it was so large and so massive and shadow casting and such, then enacted modern-day zoning laws. I just feel that if there is an uptick, and maybe throughout this whole district, but there may be one or two places where we should really prepare a little bit more for the future.
I agree with you, and I agree with Mr. Each.
Yeah, if we're making the distance less, that means that we're not really compromising. If we just maintained what it is, it would give us that little bit more breathing room and still be able to go high. But I'm just talking, do we want to have our cake eaten too and get sick from doing that?
Well, I would, in that case, take a lot of Alka-Seltzer. I would let it go as it is because we're just, we're going to complicate the issue.
Let me interject my thoughts at this point. What this ordinance is doing, it's finally establishing a more pragmatic setback for the future, something that we don't currently have along 125th or Dixie Highway or 7th Avenue. I look at places along 7th Avenue where some of those buildings, if they were bought out and one or two houses behind them, you could radically change that. If you put a beautiful parking garage behind a building and build a taller building and had cafes and other types of retailing there with a broad sidewalk, could be quite nice. But as it stands, it's not very practical. And you look at the parking along West Dixie Highway. People pull directly off the road at an angle into a facility and traffic is so heavy, that's a really dangerous way to line parking anymore. This gives us a design standard going forward, and it also addresses the parking garage issue from aesthetics. Now, granted, it doesn't yet address the height issue, but that height issue has to be addressed elsewhere in the Land Development Regulations. Currently, we count a parking garage against the building height, which is not a pragmatic way of doing things. But I'm hopeful that we're going to get to the LDRs somewhere in the next year, year and a half, and have the opportunity then to readdress and hopefully rectify that issue because I think the Commission here is all generally in agreement that our building heights are our biggest weakness, the way we've got this set up. This does not address the height of the garage, but it does address the design aesthetics. And for that and for the sidewalk setbacks, I'm all in favor of this, and I would urge you to vote for this and move it, knowing that we're going to be taking on the LDRs in the next year, year and a half, and we have a chance to rectify those other issues and incorporate this into that future vision. One of the things I look at for big buildings, I think our blocks are too small. Unfortunately, we'd need to combine two of them to get the real kind of scaled-up development that would make us a destination place, and maybe that may happen someday.
But actually, I could think of some of the properties where you do have some of the buildings just east of 12th Avenue that are pretty good-sized properties that could handle a fairly large development.
There are some places where that could be done with redevelopment. But at any rate, the Chair would certainly call for a motion to move this forward. I recognize it doesn't do everything we wanted to do, but it's certainly a big improvement over what we've had.
May I ask a question of staff? And that is, if we have this downtown action committee that is reviewing downtown requirements and possibilities, if they should in their studies, and it's been four months, but not too much has been revealed, because they just had their first meeting, but four months of presentations from the consultants, suppose that committee and/or the consultants come up with, as one of their concepts, that there is a widening of one of the streets? I mean, for instance, maybe it's 125th Street, said, "We really need another, either a median in the middle or an extra parking lane or something larger for, on the side, for setback, for cafeteria tables, cafe tables and such." If that came about, would we be able to sort of change this, to make the exception to this sort of general rule for this district that you're calling out? Or are we now locked in stone? I don't know if I'm being clear. We're saying, "Okay, this is fine, but if they say we should rethink those requirements in a certain area..."
Can we rewrite the ordinance?
Can we rewrite at least--
An ordinance can always be rewritten.
Exactly. Just like we're doing tonight. We're rewriting the ordinance. That's number one. Number two, these-- Number two, these amendments are being made to effectuate a master plan that took a lot of effort and resources to produce. The LDRs, the master plan is a tactical document. This is... Well, actually, it's a strategic document. These LDRs are the tactics required to effectuate the strategy. The master plan is the strategy. Ordinances can be amended as circumstances dictate and it's a living document.
You know, we went before the Board of Adjustment a couple of weeks ago because of things that are etched in stone. I think flexibility and common sense are the best way to approach this. We're not going to be able to think of every contingency in the future. It's just virtually impossible. And if we have a decent developer come in and let's say he wants to build, let me daydream, something like downtown Chicago, Lower Whacker, Upper Whacker, and take the airspace on 125th Street. I think we should be flexible enough to go for it, go for the gusto. Like, when I seen today in the Miami Herald, a beautiful project that's going to go up downtown, magnificent project, I'm saying to myself, why isn't that going up there in Biscayne Landings? Why, you know, there's such great things that we can...
Yes, I thought that too.
You know, and I just don't want to lock us into stone, you know?
I don't think this locks us into stone at all. I think it takes us the next step.
No, I agree. I agree. I don't think we can... There's a couple of questions I have on this, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, go ahead, Kenny.
On page 422, on section C, I think this is pretty good. Lighting shall not produce glare or negative impact off-site... Yeah, on page 422.
Section 5.
Sidewalk easement, a dedication shall require. Then you have number... Letter C, and that's number two... I'm sorry, number one. Letter C, number one, subparagraf one. Are you with me? 422, on the bottom of the page, on and off-street parking, okay? And on the last sentence, lighting shall not produce glare or negative impact off-site use or traffic on adjacent streets. I agree with that 100%. And I was just wanting... I refresh my memory. I read this a couple of times. Do we also have that for ground-level parking lots on private property? Because I don't remember seeing... I highlighted that and I think that's essential, that we have that in... For parking lots, residential parking lots that are in our neighborhood, what the heck? You know, you can have a... The proprietor or the owner of that property can put bright lights up there and they're going to be glaring into the street or glaring into your neighbor's yard. So, I think that's... We do have that.
This does address surface parking lots, including.
Okay. And this is on private property?
Yes.
Okay.
This is on and off-street parking is surface parking lots included.
You know what I'm saying? Like, say my neighbor has the parking lot next to me and he's got these big, bright lights up there and it's glaring into the street. I find that...
That is correct. That would have to go through a process with the departments where they provide a lighting plan and that has to pass through the departmental review process.
Okay, but I mean, that's in the ordinance now?
It was always there.
Okay.
This is existing now.
Okay, all right.
And Kenny, remember too, lighting is changing radically.
Yeah, and I see some of it getting brighter and it's starting to look like the Broward County Jail and the...
Yeah.
And not the soft yellow lights that we have.
They're doing better with look-down lighting too. It's just that some builders don't want to spend the money to get there.
Okay, the other one I have is on page 5 of 22D, Architectural Design Standards. Page 5 of 22D. New buildings shall be oriented as to face public streets or public open spaces. Buildings shall be oriented to define a pedestrian walkway, public street, or public open space. We went through a thing with Publix where they wanted to face north, not Biscayne Boulevard. Are we shooting ourselves in the foot on this one? And just saying, new buildings shall be oriented to face a public street or a public... Is that absolutely necessary? That's my question to you as a planner.
Well, as far as planning perspective is...
See, I want to make my entrance on a side.
Right. As far as planning perspective is concerned, yes, the new buildings, that... The first line already exists. The first line that you see under D number two...
Yeah, new buildings shall be oriented to face a public street or public open space.
Yeah, that's already there in the code right now.
Okay.
The next line, which is an underlined line, is new language to reinforce the first sentence.
Buildings shall be oriented to define pedestrian walkway, public street, or public open space.
Right. The reason being that we want to make our developments more pedestrian-accessible, bicycle-accessible, and pedestrian and bicycle-friendly, so that there is movement in and out of the building and the spaces.
Let me give you an example. I want to build two towers and I want a courtyard in the middle and I want my entrance on that courtyard. You follow me? Here's 125th Street. Here's my two towers. I don't want my entrance on 125th Street, but I want this beautiful courtyard with all the amenities in it and I want the entrance in that courtyard. Is this going to negate that?
It will not negate it. It will... What we do is, these land development regulations are there for a purpose. What we try to do is, many times and several times, you also have to look at a property according to its own characteristics. If there are certain special reasons or special characteristics to that property and if it works with the site plan, if it works with the downtown master plan, then we would work with the developer and bring the best solution forward.
And remember too, Kenny, in your example, that courtyard becomes a public walkway.
Right. And that's facing the street. Okay. All right. I just... You know, we went through this with Publix.
And Mr. Hich, let's not forget that. Worst-case scenario, the property owner can still come in and obtain a variance, seek a variance, if the circumstances so require. So, even when it's written like this, in this manner, it's not a full prohibition.
Okay. So, that courtyard, we could consider that courtyard then open to the public space as... Okay, all right.
As long as the courtyard's not fenced off and there's no restricted access.
And it's connected to the sidewalk and accessible from the sidewalk and...
Please bear with my paranoia here.
Yes, I understand.
I just... I've seen so many things go down in this town in 40 years and it's just now the time to hit that home run. Okay, on page 6 of 22, required numbers of... Number of bicycle parking spaces, and you have total parking spaces in parking lot 1 to 50, and you're going to require a four-required number of bicycle parking spaces. If I have one parking space, why would I need four spots for my bicycle? It doesn't add up. It doesn't have...
If you look further, it's... If you have one space, you have four bicycle parking spaces.
Why would I want that?
If you have... Yeah, and if you have 500 times that, it's only three times the number of bicycle spaces, going to 12.
It doesn't jive.
It seems like there should be a more linear relationship.
The way I looked at that, there's no business that could validly open if it only had one parking space. And I would have liked to have seen more bicycle parking required as we did this, but I say this is at least a beginning.
But that's not... That parking space could be a rack, is what you're saying, right? So, they could put a rack in that takes up very minimal amount of space, that you could park four bikes off of the one rack. So, in effect, you're not saying that that's a parking space size.
All right.
I mean, that's what I'm getting at with this.
If I have one parking space, it says... To me, if I'm reading the pure law, it does not look... You know, like on the appellate court, we look at pure law. Am I correct, Counselor? And we look at...
We look at a lot of law. Statute, you know...
When you sit on the appellate bench one of these days, you're going to look at pure law and you're going to read the document. And I'm saying 1 to 50. It just, you know, maybe you want to say 4 to 50. Give it some realism. If I have one parking space, I'm going to go out there and...
On top of that, if I may, if one has the ability to do such a large parking facility such as 500, 1,000, or over 1,000 units, then you're probably talking about a large covered facility that has a lot of secondary space, corners and such, areas that you could be able to accommodate bike racks.
Bike racks.
And you would expect if that's a destination for these cars, then that might be because it's a large parking destination because it's next to large retail or commercial or residential. Therefore, that's probably where the bikes want to go also. So, it seems like rather than almost penalizing the smaller parking spaces, which are probably just trying to squeeze in 1, 2, 3 spaces, if you have the ability to build these 1,000 spaces, maybe there should be 100 bicycle spaces or so. And they can... We're not saying where exactly I have to put them. There are structured parking. There are plenty of places to locate a series of racks throughout without competing on a single parking space.
And by the way, a lot of those parking, those bicycle racks are... Like in Fort Lauderdale and Miami Beach, you can rent those bikes. So, people are actually setting up...
And where would you expect to find that?
Rentable, right.
You wouldn't expect to find that at a single space or two-spaces.
Exactly.
You would expect to find it at a large facility.
Find it in a large facility of some sort. But I think that can also be something that could be worked out in a variance.
Do you want to propose to increase the bicycle parking spaces? That's the bottom line.
Yes.
Okay?
But I don't know if we can give a number.
Well, but you kind of have to.
Well, I'm saying, I would say total parking spaces in lot 4 to 50, then you put...
How about one for every 10? I don't have 10 parking spaces.
I don't know if there's a formula for that.
Well, the thing is, is that it's not part of the amendment. This was not... This is not... This has been in the books since 2009. It's not one of those sections that we're bringing to your attention as an amendment.
Your language, what it is.
This has been like, this is 2009. We have not heard any negative feedback on this. And while I'm not shutting you down, I mean, you did look at this section and, you know, you may propose a change, but it's not one of the changes that's being advertised and...
The trouble is that the whole emphasis of this is that we can anticipate more structured parking, more large parking structures.
But again, I think then that that could be addressed when we get to that point.
Yeah, when we get to LDRs, we can increase the amount of required parking for bicycles across the board.
But it's something that we need to think about, definitely. I agree with you, Bill, but for now, we can let it go.
In Europe, they allow motor scooters to be parked along the sidewalks. They have roughly a 20-foot sidewalk and they have extensive areas to park motor scooters and bicycles.
And Fort Lauderdale's getting a lot like that now.
And yet, you go to downtown Miami and they cite you a ticket if you put your motorbike on the sidewalk, and yet they provide no designated parking for the motorbikes. You look at all the motorbikes that run around downtown for courier services and fast-food delivery services, it just doesn't jive.
What you just pointed out actually calls for that slightly wider sidewalk setback because maybe there would be more bicycle and scooter-oriented new traffic.
All right. Let me go to page 10 of 22.
All right, let's move to 10 of 22.
On and off-street parking, paragraph one... I'm sorry, letter C, paragraph one, or subparagraf one. Lighting shall be provided to ensure personal safety and shall be integrated into the architectural character of the development, both in terms of illumination and fixtures. When use is not open... Okay, when use is not open, only motion-activated lights for security is permitted. Lighting shall not produce glare or negative impact off-site use on traffic or adjacent streets. So, what you're saying is, I have my car parked in the parking lot or the garage, the garage is locked, I don't have the lights on. The only lights that can be in effect then are motion...
For security purposes. For security.
That's it, just the motion light. So, in other words, if nobody... Hopefully, if somebody doesn't break in there, okay. All right, okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, and let me see here. Let me see, there was a couple of other things I had. Okay, go to page 13 of 22 under... Yeah, page 13 of 22. Are you with me? And it's on connectivity and it's number one, paragraph G, number one. Okay, it says, except as provided in this subsection, no solid fence... No solid freestanding walls, hedges, or fence shall be allowed along the public street or sidewalk unless the solid fence or hedge does not exceed four feet in height. Okay, and... Decorative walls, fences, and hedges that allow visibility, such as wrought iron and split-rail fences, shall be allowed throughout, provided they do not exceed six feet in height. Allowed walls, hedges, and fences shall have an opening or a gates operable from both sides at least every 100 feet. Okay, I don't have a problem with that one. I don't have a problem with number two. Number one, four feet in height, I don't know. Now, this is on the public right-of-way only, right?
This is on...
Let me propose this. This is what I'm thinking. Let me... Maybe I got... I'm reading this wrong. I have a building and I want... And here's a sidewalk. The sidewalk is not a public right-of-way, but inside my property, I want to put a 15... Say a 10-foot hedge or an 8-foot hedge. I can't do that if my border the sidewalk?
If the four-feet height limitation... The four-feet height limitation...
Okay.
Is for traffic safety, first of all. Because if they are going around a turn and if something is higher than four feet, then the driver cannot see.
Okay.
So, that's the first thing.
Go back. I have a fence, but I want my hedge. Here's the sidewalk and here's my property line. I want to put up an 8-foot hedge all along the property, bordering the sidewalk. I can't do that under this ordinance?
This is an existing item. This is not an amendment. This has been there all the time. I mean, what I mean, this is existing.
Is that what it's saying? I can't do that?
But you can... If you are along a public street or sidewalk, if you are along a sidewalk, then you have to have only four feet high.
Only four feet?
Only four feet. But on the side yards, for example, you can have up to six feet.
You can have what?
Up to six feet.
I mean, I see some beautiful hedges when I walk in the morning, a 10, 12 feet high. I mean, what we're saying is that people can't have it if it borders the public street. I have a residential house and I want a high hedge to block the traffic from my property. This is, you know, and I want that privacy of a hedge. So, you grow the hedge 12 feet and you make it thick and it's wide and so forth and so on. What we're doing is here is we're saying we can't do that. I don't think that's right.
Well, one of the things that I look at, Kenny, is that beautiful stone wall we built on the east side for Keystone.
That wall's high, yeah.
Yes, that wouldn't be allowed under this particular language.
It doesn't make sense. I... Or?
I understand the intent of it.
Let me give you an example. If you're going to have a... Say like the new Publix comes in, I certainly don't want to look at the back of the loading zone. And if they want to put in a 12-foot hedge around their property or a 12-foot wall as aesthetically pleasant and pleasing where it borders the sidewalk, why are we limiting them to six feet? It doesn't... It's not appropriate.
And again, is this taking in regard... You're speaking of R1 and R2s, right?
I'm thinking of all districts. I mean, if I have a home or... I don't... You don't want to look at the back of Publix if you leave it in a park.
Right, no, I agree with you, but...
You know, for years, I've been looking at the back of that dump over there and, you know, finally Johnson-Wilson is something, but I think a beautiful hedge around it would be appropriate.
This item was addressed years ago. I think Mr. Seifert can remember when we got into hedges and we had quite a packed chamber that night with regards to fence sites. And I can't remember now, but I know this was addressed. And a lot of it, the city came out, was the problem with houses that were on corners and that they were blocking traffic views of drivers entering the intersection. I have no idea how, you know, why this came about.
I think we should revisit that, I really do. Well...
I think the language is very broad and very general as it's stated now.
Okay, let me move on here. Okay, let me move on here. No parking shall be located on the lawn and the front yards of homes, I agree with that, page 14 of 22, and I would hope that we start enforcing that shortly. Let me see, there's one other question I had here. Can you clarify something on the parking garages under, you did increase it from R1, or R2 to R1, 2, 3, 4, 5, that's good. Now, you go down to F, providing lighting fixtures which are cut-off fixtures or directed aimed so that they are not directly visible from any property, and, okay, great. Districts, you got R1 to R6, again, districts within 200 feet of parking structure. Now, what, in layman's terms, what does that mean? I'm trying to visualize this, what you're saying here, and I just...
Can you repeat which item you're looking at?
I'm looking at number F on page 16 of 22, under parking garages.
Right, so the lighting fixtures which are cut-off fixtures, or what they mean, that they're specifically focused, like, you know, aimed, that's what it describes them as.
What we want to do with parking garages is prevent the glare from the parking garages casting a shadow or casting light.
That's why they're aimed, that's why they're this kind.
Okay, all right, I saw, and the same thing on the top of the roof of the parking garage, where the, currently now, some of the garages have a, an elevated pole, and you see that from your residents, it looks like it's very annoying.
Mr. Each, I'd like to direct you to section 5-1409, let's go to page 17.
Give me that again, I'm sorry.
Let's go to page 17, page 17.
Page 17, yeah.
Yes, sir, look at, let's look at 6.
Number 4?
No, let's look at 6.
3?
6.
6.
Midway, the exposed top level of the parking structure shall be covered. All that, that whole section covers the issue you have just raised.
Okay, I have it highlighted in here.
Okay.
All right. All right, the only thing, I thought you did a pretty good job with this, or, I mean, really did a good job, I thought it answered most of my questions, the only thing I would go back to is that hedge, and look at that thing, because I think what we're saying to a lot of our residents is, hey, you got a hedge that's 10, 12 feet tall, and you're not in compliance with the law, and that's not right.
A lot of cities actually have that requirement, and the reason cities have that requirement is for vehicular traffic safety. If you're blocking somebody's view, then a child could be hit, you know, ran over, people can't see above the, this is relating to opaque type of structures, fences and hedges. So that's why they're brought down to 4 feet, but we can, you know, discuss this further, and perhaps, perhaps treat the R1s, you know, the residential districts, a little bit different than commercial, I don't know.
I walk in the morning, I see beautiful hedges, gorgeous hedges which give people privacy, that are manicured well, it's beautiful, and to limit a hedge to a certain...
Yes, and then I look on the west side of town, where the hedges grow all through the fences, and in some instances, serious limpede on the sidewalk because they're not maintained well. I'm willing to see this ordinance moved in its current form, recognizing it's not perfect, and we probably will have to go back and visit this again somewhere down the road.
Can I get just a little more, please?
Sure.
Just a quick one, before you get back to the item that we did want to discuss. On that page 17 that we just went over, could you elaborate on exposed spandrels are prohibited? Do we know what that means exactly? Exposed spandrels are prohibited. Spandrels, as I understand, are the lateral, the beams that go between columns, that are usually to the outside of a building, or sometimes a bridge? Are we meaning that they need to have a decorative cover, that you couldn't express them? Do we know what we mean with that phrase?
I think we are intertwining visual interest, architectural expression, aesthetics with the lighting.
Suppose it's a reinforced concrete structure, as many of them are, does that mean it calls for not expressing that concrete as such, and you have to put something decorative over it? I just don't know if we, it just seems like something that's unnecessary. It may be intended to be aesthetically more pleasing, but I'd almost, it might be self-defeating as well.
Well, I just, that would be an interesting debate before the Board of Adjustment.
It's a beam, basically, it's a beam, and it's hard to say we're not going to show a beam, or a slab, or a wall, or a column, it is one of the structural components.
As I stated earlier, it's meant to be aesthetic, it's meant to address aesthetics.
Well, I'd be happy to leave it in for now, and see what the Board of Adjustment does with it first, if we ever get to that point.
I think it's kind of ambiguous, I don't think we know what it means, actually, and I think it's something that you commonly see in parking decks, but no one says anything, it's, we don't have language to take that out, so unless we decorate. And just going back, I am still concerned, I know we have a diagram for the setbacks, and showing a 5-foot sidewalk, I understand the concept of having that minimum 5-foot sidewalk for circulation, for pedestrians to go back and forth, for wheelchairs and such, to have two-way circulation, I'm fine with that. I just am not convinced, when going back over the section 5-803, and the next few, next two pages afterwards, where it calls for the 5-foot sidewalk, and does not necessarily, and say you may have an additional pedestrian amenity, but you may not, so therefore you may just have a 5-foot setback. Are we, can you assure us that we have a building setback of at least 15 feet, and that there are no cases where all of a sudden a building will be set 5 foot from the curb because it's accommodated a sidewalk, said, oh, we don't want any public amenities, and then it's going to be set at that point, that...
The section 5-803 talks about citywide standards that are outside the major downtown area and major corridor area. So they don't have the exact same standards as the major downtown and the major corridor area standards. And that's why there is a little difference between those two sections. So, I think you mean the 803, right?
Section 5-803, and it says, the amenities, sidewalks must be hard-surfaced at least 5 feet width, fine, for the walking surface, fine. If pedestrian amenities are specified in the development plans, the amenities shall be no less than 5 foot in width, fine. Total width of sidewalk shall be a minimum of 10 feet, including pedestrian amenities. Suppose you didn't call for pedestrian amenities, is there a chance that someone could build a new structure, basically, calling for a 5-foot sidewalk, and then the building starts 5 foot from the curb, basically?
That is correct, that is what you have in the city right now.
And I think maybe we want to avoid that, I don't think any of us thought that, I think all of us were looking at 15 feet, and we're talking about 20 feet and elsewhere. What, I'm pointing out that there is a chance, whether it's in our history, in our code, existing or not, I don't think it's a good idea to have potentially high-rise buildings 5 foot from the curb. Not only does it not have the chance of a new lane, or the public amenities, or anything else, it's just downright dangerous, and it infringes on that property. I mean, if we can't, right now, we have almost a blank slate in the city, and we're saying that we're going to push it so much that we're going to come up to potentially 5 feet from the curb. That's just an uncomfortable experience, it doesn't leave a lot of room for landscaping, for bike racks, for anything, and God forbid, you're going to wheelchair...
So what language would you suggest?
I think whatever it is, a minimum, a minimum of 15 feet, my preference would really be 20 feet, but I think it's 5 feet, it's kind of dangerous. It doesn't allow for so many things that you would want to have. I mean, if nothing else, you could...
There's not 5 feet from the 10-foot sidewalk?
No, no.
Supposing we said that the total width shall be a minimum of 10 feet, with or without pedestrian amenities?
I'd like to go to the diagram and call for the 15 feet as a minimum, and they put in or do not put it in, and that allows us breathing room.
15, that you go to Board of Adjustment and get a variance on it?
No, no, I'm saying for us to require 15 or more. And if they want to get an adjustment to make it smaller, then we deal with it then. Maybe it's a low circulation street, maybe it's sort of a dead end, or, yeah, then it may be 10 feet, 5 feet, something, but to give this sort of a blank check for it to potentially be 5 feet in some cases, I think is somewhat irresponsible for us. I'd rather have it go case by case on the exceptions, and have that piece of mind, have that 15 feet that I believe all of you initially thought, as I did, when we were first discussing this, and especially, especially if we're going to be welcoming a large, high-density construction, then you want to have something that will properly offset that.
You would amend the first sentence to read sidewalks must be hard-surfaced and at least 15 feet width, and that eliminates the rest of the language.
Yeah, well, the total setback space, the paved surface of the sidewalk could be 5. That'd be great to have 10 feet of landscaping, or 10 feet of cafe tables, or some other amenity, the scooters, bicycles, all right, bus stops, I mean, think about that.
You don't have that space on 125th Street.
We're leading ourselves open to a 5-foot sidewalk, and somebody says, oh, we want to have a bus stop there, oh, we can't, because the last 10 blocks were all 5 feet wide, you can't even get a bus stop in there.
You're dealing with existing properties, this is what I don't understand with the concept that you're talking about, is those buildings aren't going to go anywhere, realistically. Let's look at this realistically, those businesses that are there aren't going anywhere. I think we have to deal with what we have there, and the language that they created is enough to deal with anybody that wants to put in something new, they're going to have to deal with setbacks that we've just discussed, 15 feet, but we can't, we can't just do, I think it has to be a deliberate approach to how we let each individual building either reinvent themselves, or a new development come in and say, no, this is what you have to do. You see what I'm saying?
But we're, I think we're yielding way too much, right away, it's going to snuff out everything. What are our existing sidewalks right now? We probably have about 15 feet in most cases downtown.
The existing sidewalk width is 5 feet, throughout the city.
It's just 5 feet, yeah.
No.
Now, if you go along 125th Street, there's hardly any areas where you have more than, more than 5 feet of sidewalk along that stretch of road.
I understand the conflict of the bus stop issue, just take a look at the modified Old Royal Castle along 125th and 7th. Our city manager, former Public Works Director, was here telling us that that's going to be one of the five places to get a new bus stop, but to do that, they have to push the funds back into the property line, take away designated car parking from that site in order to build the much-needed new bus stop, because the sidewalk is only 5 feet, and there's no place else to do this. And I understand, I'm looking for language, you want to put in a number that's greater than 5 feet?
Yeah.
Put up a number.
Yeah, I will go with the 15 at the very least, and I know that my friend Commissioner Each wants to be able to accommodate large, elegant, new development, well, your elegant new building will not be so elegant if it has a 5-foot sidewalk out front, and people feel precariously circulating if that's the case.
I mean, I could easily, I could easily go with 15 feet and let him go in and get a variance to reduce it.
Yes.
You know what, let's just back up a second, I can remember probably the most beautiful building that was put up in the city years ago, Mortgage Company of America, 125th Street, and they're right up to the sidewalk line, that's the one with all that beautiful Frank Lloyd Wright look, with the big, beautiful river stone in the front, you know which one I'm talking about? It's on the north side of 125th Street, I think, between 11th and 12th Avenue.
That, the building with the green walls?
Yeah, sort of like it.
Or the one right before it?
Not the green one, that used to be called the executive building, it had the fountains downstairs in the 70s, but this one up in the...
The one right before it, with the wooden porches?
Yeah, split level, there's variance levels.
It's an absolute gorgeous building, it goes right up to the sidewalk. And I remember them paying when we had a municipal court, because they didn't have the setback, and whatever, they paid a $500 fine, but that building is absolutely gorgeous and luxurious. You know, we can beat the heck out of this all night, but we have this here, let's work with it, you know, I got, there's things that I'm not comfortable with, like the hedge and a couple other things in here, but you know what, I can't see making it a 15-foot setback.
I would like to make the motion that it be the minimum of 15 feet, because I want to encourage these sidewalk cafes, I want to encourage landscaping, and the bicycles, and the bus shelters.
... because of the static.
Okay, now we're back on, we're okay? Okay, you know...
All right, we've got a motion on the floor to go 15 feet. Do we have a second for the purpose of discussion? Am I allowed to second that motion, as the chair?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second the motion for discussion. We're in at 15 feet, Mr. Prevattel moves for 15.
And that's what all of us really thought this was, to be honest, when we were looking at this, we thought it was 15 feet minimum.
I seconded the motion. If we call for a vote, this is probably going to go down 2 to 2. Any further discussion, the chair calls for a vote, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?